It's eight thirty, and I'm going to call the Clay County Board of Commissioners meeting for December the third, two thousand twenty-four, and I order. First item on the agenda is approval of the agenda.
We can approve.
I'll second the motion.
Have motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Next up, we've got employee recognition. Sheriff Dem- Empting has two employees he's going to recognize today. Sheriff?
Thank you. So our first employee is going to be Deputy Chris McCarthy. Come on up, Chris. Chris has thirty years of service with the sheriff's office. He started actually working in corrections in the jail and then moved over into sheriff's office side, working patrol. Then he went into warrants and transports, and then he spent a lot of time in investigations where he was a narcotics investigator. In there, he worked on building up a lot of collaboration with many different agencies. He did a great job in that division. A few years ago, he moved into the civil service division. Again, he's built up a lot of collaboration with many different agencies, and Chris has done a good job. In each of those roles, he's become kind of that expert in his field in those roles. So if there's something that we need right now as far as civil service, this is the guy we go to, along with his partner Jared. But they're both very knowledgeable in what they do. So, Chris, we appreciate your thirty years of service. We're looking forward to another thirty years. This is the time now.
It might be difficult.
This is the time now where we give everybody else like five minutes for rebuttal of what I just said. No, just kidding. Yeah, yeah. Just kidding. No, we really appreciate your service. Thank you for your thirty years. And the next guy up is going to be Deputy Jeff Bachen. Unfortunately for us, Jeff can't be here today. Fortunately for Jeff, he's actually at the hospital with his lovely bride where they're having a baby girl.
Oh, yeah.
And that's happening this morning. So congratulations to Jeff, not only on his fifteen years, but also his baby girl. Jeff started in corrections as well and then moved over into the sheriff's office side about ten years ago. It's coming up on eleven years, actually, 2014. And he's worked in patrol and most recently moved into investigations as well where he's working narcotics. He's done a very good job in that role, just as Chris did as well. Jeff, again, is one of those expert in his field where if we have any questions pertaining to any type of narcotics investigation, things like that, Jeff is one of the guys that we go to. So we're very happy to have Jeff as part of the sheriff's office. We appreciate his fifteen years of service as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. Okay, we have Jessica Mickelson here with Julie Clyer, Social Services, twenty years of service.
Thank you. Well, first of all, Julie, I just want to say thank you on your twenty years of service to Clay County Social Services. She started out in our ongoing Child Protection Unit as a social worker and eleven years ago transitioned into her current role as a licenser. Julie licenses our corporate foster care homes, but her primary role is licensing in-home family childcare homes. Julie is very dedicated with her work as a licenser. She ensures exceptionally high standards in all of the homes that she licenses. She comes to work every day with a positive attitude, has a very strong work ethic, and we're just very lucky to have her part of our team and appreciate the twenty years of service. Congratulations, Julie.
Thanks.
Okay, now you guys can go. It is good to see so many of my old colleagues. Drew a crowd today. Next, we have citizens to be heard. Are there any citizens here who wish to address any issue not on today's agenda? Steve, do we have anybody online?
We do not, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Next, we have approval of payment of bills and vouchers.
I'll offer a motion to pay the bills.
Have motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. And next, after that, we have approval of minutes for November nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four.
Move to approve.
Have motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Okay, next up, Matt Jacobson, Director of Planning and Zoning. Approval to apply for FEMA Hazard Mitigation Grant Program and to designate the planning director as the authorized representative and signer for grant documents. Matt, it's all yours.
Good morning, Mr. Chair Commissioners. Yeah, this is a request to submit an application to the FEMA Hazard Mitigation Grant Program on behalf of Chad and Sean Dubuque who are here today. This request is likely familiar because we had initially about a year ago submitted a notice of intent to apply, and that's kind of the first step in the process. And so that is what got this particular project in the queue, so to speak, and it's really a waiting list right now. And we're fortunate that a project was dropped this year, and so the state had reached out and asked us if we'd be interested in submitting an application. So just to give you a little bit of background on this particular property, this was a property that has experienced some severe rotational bank slumping. And it's in Mullen Township. It's on the Buffalo River, and it's getting to the point where this is a common problem along the Buffalo River, especially this stretch, but in this particular case, it is very close to the house. It is also exposing the septic tank and potentially impacting the septic system there. So since the time when you approved the notice of intent to, the NRCS was able to come out and do kind of a field report, a geotechnical report, which would be a requirement for this. And they basically found that, yeah, this is some pretty severe bank slumping. It could be done. It could continue to worsen. It's really tough to say with this. And just because it's so close to the house, there's that threat of damage there to that property. So what this would essentially allow us to do is move forward with submitting the application to FEMA for a acquisition and demolition. There's a seventy-five percent federal, twenty-five percent local cost share for this. And as was discussed a year ago, really, it was my understanding is the county does not have the funds to provide the local match, so that would have to come from the landowners. We did look into, or I did look into additional cost share assistance from the state because sometimes the DNR will offer a twelve-and-a-half percent cost match, so they would do half of the local. But the property has to be in the floodplain, and it has to have been either damaged by flooding or threatened to be damaged by flooding. This property unfortunately is not in the floodplain, but it is affected by erosion. So we're not able to basically qualify for that twelve-and-a-half percent from the state.
Commissioner Mojo.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Jacobson, we can't prove that the pressures in the soil have aided in the erosion?
The pressures in the soil likely, yes, that it's likely what's causing the erosion, but looking from what with the DNR, they basically said that this would not be a hire.
That's not a quality.
Yep, yep. So, yeah. So for this, just looking essentially for your approval for us to continue moving forward with submitting the application and also just having designated me as kind of the authorized representative or signer on all the grant submittal materials. The other thing I should note is that we did have a county-owned lands committee meeting, and we did talk about this just because if the grant was awarded and we did, and the county acquired the property, it would have a FEMA DNR deed restriction on it where the county would essentially own this property, couldn't be sold or conveyed, and then we would be responsible for the property.
Is that similar to what, the same thing happened with the properties that the City of Morehead bought on the flood buyouts?
Correct, yep. And similar to the properties that the county acquired in two thousand eleven and two thousand fourteen as well. There was a number of buyouts related to flooding there as well.
So once this happens, we own it?
Yep.
In perpetuity?
Yep. And so it would either be, right now, it's one lot, but it's actually two lots in a subdivision. And so the owner, I think, is exploring the possibility of selling one of the lots that doesn't, it's not developed, the house is not on it, to the neighbor. So it could either, it would either be a two-acre property or a one-acre, one-acre property.
If he sold the other property, then that could help offset some of the costs that's being incurred for the twenty-five percent.
Yep.
Okay.
And I'm also working with County Attorney Brian Melton on developing an agreement or a contract for that local match, outlining and designating the responsibilities for that as well. Any questions for me or any questions for the property owners, Mr. and Mrs. Dubuque at all?
Mr. Krabbenoff.
Yeah, maybe just a follow-up. I kind of remember this question before, but so, again, nothing's done on the second parcel as far as the sale. I mean, that's in the future.
Yep.
But how would that property be protected from this happening on that lot? I don't know the location, but...
Oh, from the slumping to continue on to the other lot?
And what happens with that?
Well, if we, if it would essentially, I think there would have to be something in that purchase agreement that basically says this is a possibility. It wouldn't be necessarily a developable lot.
Okay, okay. Just curious, and I don't want to tie any strings on that early, you know, but I'm just asking.
Yeah, we wouldn't want someone to purchase that undeveloped lot thinking, and then develop it only for the same thing to happen again. Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Most of this issue is happening on the lot with the residents.
Yeah, and I've gone out there. All right, thank you.
Commissioner Mojo.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Jacobson, thanks for working on this. I know this is a tricky situation, so I appreciate your willingness to work with the landowners on this. You know, I appreciate there's an option. Like, what percentage likelihood will the award be received?
That I am not sure if I did ask, and the state was not able to give a good response to that. They just gave me essentially advice for making the application as strong as possible.
And the only reason I ask is, isn't this the same pool of money that the City of Morehead goes after for their flood mitigation components, their lift stations? I'm fairly certain it's the, well, maybe that's not, I'm sorry, not FEMA, that's DNR hazard mitigation.
Yeah.
I'm apologizing. You know, I hope that as we move through this, we'll continue to look for local match I know that's a large burden, that twenty-five percent is a large burden. I think to get out from, to find a solution to the issue certainly makes sense, but I hope that as staff will continue to work for additional pots that we could potentially find to come up with that cost share.
Yeah.
Or percentage of it, anyway.
Sure.
Anything else? Do we have a motion?
I'll offer a motion to approve the request to submit the application for a property acquisition and demo to the FEMA Haz Mitigation Grant Program on behalf of the Dubuques and authorize Matt Jacobson, the planning director, to serve as a county representative.
Have motion second. Further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
And good luck to you and the Dubuques on this. Next up, we have Justin Sorum, County Engineer.
Yes, good morning.
Morning.
So I'm here this morning to request approval for out-of-state travel for the county engineer and the assistant county engineer. So this would be for the annual NACE conference. So it's a National Association of County Engineers. The conference is in Schaumburg, Illinois this year. The conference does run from April fourteenth to the seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five. This is something that we usually annually attend. It's really good networking, a lot of different funding things on the agenda, and I think there is a lot of value in this conference.
I'll move to approve.
Have motion second. Any discussion or questions? Not all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Commissioner Mojo.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Justin, I just, since now that we have snow on the ground, or we've had a couple episodes of snow, and I've had some calls in regards to school buses and the like, I think it's important for the public to know that Justin and the sheriff's office has met with representatives of all the school districts. They have the bus company numbers, excuse me, the bus companies are aware of when Justin's crews will be starting and when and if they need to pull plows. I would say in the last couple of years, there's more discussion between the schools and the highway department and sheriff's department than ever. So just know that there's great lines of communication and planning to make sure that the roads are clear for kiddos.
Okay.
And if there is any questions, feel free to call me at any time.
Very good. Just for the record, the motion passed. Okay, anything else for Justin? Remember, what happens in Schaumburg stays in Schaumburg. Okay, next up, we have our county commissioner, Stephen Larson.
County Administrator.
Administrator.
Got to live in Minnesota.
Gave you a demotion.
Good morning, Ms. Chair Commissioners. Before you this morning, for your consideration is the reappointment of Commissioner Ebinger to the, as the Clay County Representative, to the Greater Fargo-Moorhead Economic Development Board of Directors. By their bylaws, I know that normally we don't address committee assignments until January, but by their bylaws, they requested that each December we provide them our appointment. So with that, I would yield for any questions.
Any questions for Steve?
And you're still wanting to serve on that board?
I will serve wherever I'm needed.
All right. I will make a motion to request the appointment of Commissioner Ebinger as our representative to the Greater Fargo-Moorhead EDC Board of Directors.
Have motion second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, next up, we have a public hearing.
Mr. Chair, we're not scheduled to meet for another eleven minutes, so maybe we could do committee assignments.
Yeah. We'll start off with Commissioner Gross today.
Okay, I'll take up Kevin's time too, so since he's not here. I had no meetings this week, no report.
Next up, Paul Krabbenoff, Commissioner.
Well, I'll take up Kevin and Frank's time. So just going back to, just a quick comment, going back to last Tuesday with our truth and taxation that we had, I want to certainly thank Jill Murray, our assessor and her team. I think they do a wonderful job through the year of answering questions for the public, and I think that was shown that night with one person coming and stating some, definitely some real concerns on mainly farmland. On the, that was Tuesday. On Wednesday, I had three meetings, had our weekly meeting for the PRTF with Rep. Keeler discussing ongoing strategies, working with, down with the legislature throughout this process. That afternoon, had the Historical and Cultural Society Board of Director monthly meeting. We had a final review so everybody understood the two thousand twenty-five budget, and that had been approved. So it was a review of what was, for everybody to understand a little deeper context of a couple areas. Also, the Historical and Cultural Society is building up donations, trying to, in an attempt to acquire five thousand dollars. We've done about three thousand to this point, and that will be our match when Giving-A-Hard Day comes. So hopefully that'll, it's been pretty successful in leveraging money for the Historical Society. We also had a presentation on the Minnesota Historical Society, which is longstanding and very well recognized throughout the nation. It was, could you get some facts on that? And then also to report that the board will have no meeting in December, so January will be our next. Last night, I had Moore's City Planning and Zoning. We had a few items on that one for the project downtown, Moore's Center Mall. It was approved for them to go forward with a environmental assessment worksheet for the state, and the reason that's needed is because of the mixes of zoning and also of the project itself, its distance from the river. They also came forward with a five-year capital improvement plan, various projects, and that was approved by resolution. And last, it was an update to the twenty-four comprehensive implementation plan, and again, there was a quick review on that, and that was more information. So that's what I had for the read. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Commissioner Mojo.
Thank you. Last week, I also attended the PRTF Planning Committee. We had several tasks that came out of that in order to continue strategizing how we best and effectively raise that project awareness. Had sent a couple emails to the governor's office. It does sound like we will have a meeting Friday with them to update them on the plans. You know, we're trying to figure out how best to coordinate the asks, and the split legislature, I think, provides us a good opportunity to continue to have wide support in that, so we'll continue that. Out of that dialogue, I did have a discussion with Commissioner Ebinger about reaching out to Commissioner Schnell, who he was able to connect with yesterday. He will be in some form or fashion providing either himself or the staff availability on Wednesday for a meeting this week. I fielded several calls from citizens on the ordinance discussion that will be on the agenda on the seventeenth in regard to flavored tobacco business in Barnesville called with concerns on that, as well as a couple individuals connected with that, wanting to raise awareness the amount of sales tax that's collected from those products, but also provide feedback as well. I encourage them to attend on the seventeenth. Yesterday, I attended the MetroCog Executive Committee meeting. We did approve the two thousand twenty-five North Dakota DOT MetroCog contract, as well as a Minnesota DOT MetroCog contract, and then a three-C agreement. We did talk about the employee salary adjustment, and we typically look at the average between all of the entities. This year, it was a little higher. We did approve a recommendation of a three-point-two-five percent. And there's a vacant assistant transportation planner position there. As we all know, recruitment is tricky. We do have someone serving as an intern from NDSU, will be graduating this spring. So we did look at how to make an adjustment to provide an employment offer to that individual contingent on the graduation degree this May. And I believe that concludes my reports.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, and then, I'm sorry, I did have one other thing.
Sure.
Yesterday, I was able to go to the Cass County Courthouse, and Commissioner Sher- Shirlene and Chad Peterson retired yesterday, and so was able to wish them well. They've been great colleagues of all of us around this table throughout their terms.
I also wished them well. They were great to work with. Surely enjoyed it, and I hope they enjoy their next phase, whatever it might be. I'm sure they're going to stay involved. Last week, on Tuesday, I met with Rory Beal and Jason McCoy to have a discussion on the tobacco ordinance that'll be coming up on the seventeenth for discussion. There are a lot of moving parts on that. I think it'll be an interesting discussion, we get some of the public in here. Later that day, we had our truth and taxation, which has been addressed, again, thanks to our staff, the response on this, and I know nobody likes paying property taxes, but I think our staff has done a good job of educating the public, responding to their needs, and I think this commission has done a good job of trying to stay on top of the size of the ask, which is important to folks, especially our rural, our farm people. The taxes they're paying are considerable, and they need to know that the use of those funds is what we need, not what we want. Wednesday, the twenty-seventh, had a pretty sizable meeting regarding the homeless and first responders' needs and responses to the homeless situation this winter. We had Kathy McKay, Rory Beal, Gabe Tweetin, Quinn Jagger, Troy Amundsen. Chief Monroe was there, Mayor Carlson was there, Pastor Brooks was there, had representatives from Sanford, Essentia, CAP LP, the Red Cross. It was a very good discussion that resulted in at least a partial capacity for our first responders in the middle of the night with people that are out in the elements, and it's a danger to them, but they aren't in a condition that would facilitate the need to put them into a medical facility. Came up with some responses, certainly came up with some needs. Rory did a very good job of identifying who the participants were at this meeting and the ongoing process. He is going to break them into teams, and they're going to continue to meet and try and come up with some answers. But this is, the problems Churches United is having is not, it's the tip of the iceberg. It's more a sign of what the issue is as the cause of it. And there's going to need to be some long-term discussions and ideas that come up, and I was very impressed with the intelligence and the commitment of the people that were there trying to find some solutions. And that completes my report. And we are almost at nine o'clock.
Mine's quick. I can get it done by nine.
Go ahead.
Last Wednesday, I participated in the web meeting with Representative Keeler. That's been addressed. Yesterday, I had meetings with Darren in regards to several things happening at the county, and also with Joe Olson, our facilities director. And then yesterday afternoon, we had a discussion with Cory Bang, Darren, Joe, and I just on the, looking at some of the items around solid waste at this time. Reminder for our employees, a holiday party is this Friday, four forty-five to six thirty. And also, there will be no board meeting next week because the commission will be at the AMC Annual Conference in Bloomington from Monday to Wednesday. That concludes my report.
Hey, thank you. And one more thing, real quick, since we have seconds. No, we don't. But, real quick. But, real quick, I did talk to Commissioner Schnell from the Department, State Department of Corrections yesterday at the request of the PRTF group, and he is going to participate. Hopefully, either he or senior staff member will participate in the phone meeting this Wednesday. Again, the PRTF team is doing an excellent job, and anything I can do to help, I'm happy to. This is kind of an exciting project. And I, in talking to Commissioner Schnell, I think he understands it too. And he said, the, within the governor's office, the recognition of mental health services for youth is a big issue with them, and hopefully we'll be able to give them some answers. But I remain at y'all's disposal. Whenever you need me, call me up. I'm a, you know, I'm just not part of the committee, but happy to help. And now, if we can get a motion to move into a public hearing.
Mr. Chair, I'll offer a motion to go into a public hearing in regards to supporting a two-year residential property tax abatement for Clay County with the supporting resolution 2024-35.
I can. Motion to second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Pose same sign. We're moving into a public hearing. Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, as you recall, back on November 12th last month, Lisa Bodie, Government Affairs Director from the City of Morehead, came before this board requesting the extension of Make Morehead Home Property Tax Rebate, an extended request. Ms. Bodie shared that since the inception of this program, over 1,500 homes have been built and adding an additional $503 million in taxable values with property taxes, valuations, and revenues of over $7 million annually. We heard the program is impacting different citizens' willingness to build in the Minnesota side. And so, the request before this board was to approve that. This board unanimously supported that extension. And this morning, that brings us to our tax abatement program for the county. The resolution before you this morning, for you to consider again, is 2024-35. It would provide a tax rebate for residential properties for fiscal year '25 and '26. If this board would approve extending this program, we would reach out to the other cities within Clay County. As you've, handout, you've seen, Dilworth has already taken action on, with its city councils. And we would again, reach out to the other cities, looking at their interest to participate in school districts. They would also provide, need to provide a resolution to Ms. Johnson at the, at the Auditor Treasurer's Office by December 31st. This abatement is a two-year commitment. Governmental entities must commit to the program dates and cannot opt out throughout the time. With that, I would yield for any questions.
Questions for Steve.
We didn't mention, what is the abatement? How much is it there? Is it, it's 2% yet, or?
So our, our abatement, the maximum amount for our abatement goes up to the 407, is it?
No.
No, 200?
I don't know about our piece, but the program itself, it's on the real estate tax.
Correct. And so, so the abatement, it depends on what the home is, the homes that, the value of those homes. As we talked about last year, or last week, in our, in our truth and taxation, we, we have a certain, certain amount of those values are applied. They pay in their values, and then the rebate goes back to them for the, for that year.
There is a limit on it, Frank, on the amount of the value, but it's on, it's on the house, not the property.
I just want to let people know what it is.
I think we are correct, though. The average has been in that $400,000.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, we're in a public hearing.
Is it our?
We're in a public hearing.
I apologize.
Any other questions for Steve? Any questions from anyone in the audience regarding this issue?
I would like to see.
Yes, ma'am, if you'd step to the podium and tell us who you are.
Good morning. I'm Karen Lauer. I'm the Economic Development Director for the City of Barnesville. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this morning. First of all, I'd like to thank the commissioners for their past support of the two-year property tax abatement program. This program has been vital to the city of Barnesville. When this program originally started, the competition that Clay County was facing with Cass County in terms of residential development was significant. And I think over the period of years that this program has been in place, it's helped to level the playing field. Depending on particular needs of homeowners, there, there are reasons why it is advantageous to locate in North Dakota versus Minnesota. So this tool remains critically important so that as they weigh their various needs and amenities that the two states offer, this program really does float Clay County and the communities in Clay County to the, to the top. At this particular point in time, when we're coming out of a period of high interest rates, high construction costs, it's become more challenging for families to afford to construct new homes. That's another reason why this program and the timing of a two-year extension really is critical. In Barnesville, in 2024, we constructed one new home. That is down significantly over prior years. And that, again, speaks to the higher construction costs, the higher interest rates. So as I get the phone calls from people that are considering the possibility of building a new home, they ask about this program. They ask, will it be renewed? Will this create another opportunity for them to possibly move forward with constructing a new home? So I urge the commissioners to, again, extend this, this program. One of the other things that Barnesville is facing is unfortunately, the, the voters made the decision to not approve the school referendums. We had three issues on the ballot. All three went down. So that creates a challenge for the school district. And from an economic development standpoint, we're the partners with the school district to ensure that we are attracting more young families to the community, to keep those enrollment numbers up. And so this program is, again, another program that, that helps to attract those homeowners, which will keep our school district strong. And strong school districts in Clay County is really critical to positioning Clay County moving forward. One question that I did have, and Steve, I don't know if you know the answer to this. I know in early years of the program, the program was inclusive of multifamily residential new investment. And I don't know if the, the county has continued to include that in their abatement program. What I would say is in Barnesville, it goes back to the 70s, since we have had a market rate apartment project built in Barnesville. And over the course of the last nine months, I am in conversations with a Fargo developer that has an interest in constructing a 28-unit, single-family apartment project in the community. And so, if in fact, the county's current abatement program includes multifamily residential, that would be helpful to Barnesville, potentially being able to land this $5 million-plus project that would offer another opportunity for young families with kids to come into the community. We've had people say, well, we'd like to test drive the community versus just making that commitment to build a $400,000 house. If they're able to come to the community, enroll the kids in the school district, and then take that next step for new construction, that, that again, is helpful to the, to the community. So again, in summary, thank you for your past support. It's critical to economic development in Barnesville. I would urge you to continue supporting this program so that we're able to be competitive in the marketplace. And I'd be able to, I'd be happy to answer any questions that commissioners might have about Barnesville and, and our activities.
Any questions? Commissioner Krabbenoff?
So Steve, I'm, I only really get involved with the single families, so I don't know how to answer Karen's question there. I'm, I mean, I'm looking on our resolution, and they talk about different classes, but I don't know what those numbers mean.
I, I think in the past, it's been, it's been single-family homes, but certainly, I can look for clarification from our auditor treasurer.
Commissioner Mojo?
Thank you. Well, we're all part of lots of housing discussions throughout the year. And the points that Karen brought up certainly are not affecting only Barnesville, and would seem to be something that would really benefit all of Clay County if a multifamily. Obviously, there's different classes and tiers, but if those multifamily projects were included in abatements, but, you know, I don't have any supporting document that tells me if it is.
According to that resol, oh, excuse me. When the resolution, read that resolution, it doesn't include it, you know, but I think we should make whatever effort we can to probably include. I don't know if we have to put a size limit on there or not. You know, I mean, after a while, it does not really be multifamily, once you get into a huge 100-unit apartments and stuff like that. I don't know. I wouldn't recommend going into a, I think it would take a different, we'd have to move for a different resolution to be established, but certainly would be in favor of that.
And, and Mr. Chair, Commissioner Gross, and commissioners, I certainly can, if you made this approval moving forward, I certainly could reach out to Ms. Johnson in regards to any, any rules and regulations that would preclude us from being able to do that.
Can we be sure to get that answer back to Karen as well?
Yes. And if, if, as Commissioner Gross mentioned, we may need a second, second resolution. Again, we're coming up on the deadline of the end of the year.
Right.
But, but if the board takes action on the resolution before it, at least at this point, the, the cities could move forward, and the school districts could move forward with the continuing the, the current plan.
Any other questions, comments?
Well, to that point, that's the only concern I have as our partners on this. But, you know, I agree with everybody here. Let's, it may might start to move toward on this, and then follow up on the development of the other.
Okay. Do we have a motion to move out of public?
Well, I think we need to ask for any other public testimony.
Any other public testimony? And I don't believe we have anybody online?
We do not, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Do I have, do I have a motion to move out of public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the hearing.
I'll second.
Okay, a motion to second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. We are out of the public hearing. Quiet.
So I, obviously, I support a continuation of this. I think it's anything that we can do to help continue offering some sort of program that helps, helps offset the border challenge. And we've talked about this in a lot of different areas. I think it is really hard to look at what interest rates are now, and the cost of materials now, and think that homeownership is as easy as it was 10 or 15 years ago, which it's not. You know, I appreciate, if we were to look at including some sort of multifamily component, understanding, though, that that, that pivots a little bit from offering incentive for families to build, to offering some sort of incentive for a developer to build, and then families can acquire homeownership through that, that route. So I'm not interested in, in some sort of program that would, would, you know, benefit or discount 170-unit property building. However, you know, I think if we were to cap it at a, you know, a six or an eight or, or whatever that looks like, multifamily, I would be in favor of that. And, and I think it would require some sort of amendment to the resolution, and obviously, including that, making sure it goes through legal. But having served on this board for a lot, a few years, I see that new construction percentage on our, on our budget discussion go down every year. And so, I get that there's an inflation component and, and all of that. But what Karen has said in regards to one new family build, you know, if you've driven through Barnesville over the last five years, there have been a lot of builds. And so I think we should be a little more responsive to the market because it is difficult. And I agree, I, I don't want to preclude our, our partners from these issues. But if I, if I'm not mistaken, I think Morehead had new, more new builds than anyone in the community in regards to actual units. And so I think they're, they're doing quite well, and I don't think this would maybe hurt them.
Just an observation, in, in some of the growth I've seen in Morehead over the last 20 years, really, they're moving towards a lot of neighborhoods that are doubles and quads. And that seems to be a good entry point for a lot of the young families that are just getting started, and they want to pay rent, but they want to have a home. This would be an option, if we can extend it to that. I agree, if you get into 70 to 120 units, that's working with the developer. And we're interested in attracting people who are residents and stay, and their kids go to school, and also in the ability to provide housing to our workforce. So I hope we will explore the multifamily aspects of this, even though I don't think this applies to it on, on the resolution we're currently looking at. And of course, as Commissioner Mojo indicated, probably need to get legal involved in it too, and take a look at things. But, Commissioner Gross?
I think that's what some of our small towns need, is a multi-unit, because we have a lot of houses. I mean, I just look at the block that I live in, there's three, four-bedroom houses that have one person living in them. You know, we build a multi-unit, some of those people would probably rent apartments and sell those houses available that aren't the high-priced $400,000, $500,000 homes, you know. And I think we could encourage more development, families moving into a town, if they could buy a, a unit that's not a house, that's not high-priced. So I think we could get a small, some small multi-unit houses in our small towns, in our smaller towns. I think it really would help, you know. I think I've been in some meetings where they said, we've got plenty of housing, we just got the wrong people living in them, you know. And that's, I just look at my own block, like I say, we got three houses that they're, all they're, they're all three widows or widowers. And then there's the other five houses on the block, are two people living in it, and they're all four-bedroom houses. So it's just, we got the wrong people living in our houses that we do have. I'm not saying that people shouldn't be, a married couple shouldn't be living in a house, but I'm just saying that I think sometimes in an apartment house is a lot more efficient for some of our senior citizens, like myself. Okay. Enough said.
Commissioner Krabbenoff?
Just, real quick, just follow up, I would support that continuing of this. But as we go, what thoughts with multi, multifamily? Certainly in the world of finance for these homes, there's many programs that are already well-set, whether it's VA, FHA, conventional setup for one to four. So that's pretty standard in the industry already. So I think that's something we should look at as a minimum. So, anyway. So, anyway. So, ready for a motion?
Yeah.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution 24-35 to support two-year residential property tax abatement program in Clay County.
Second. Have a motion to second. Further discussion. Commissioner Mojo.
Thank you. My only direction would be, I would like to see some sort of additional amendment to this resolution to include something, and I get that we have to have a public hearing, and we're short on time, but we do even have a meeting on the 31st. So I—you know, I'm hopeful that we could maybe gather some info in time, and if—if legally we can't, I guess that's our answer as well, and we should communicate that to the communities.
Anything else? Right, we have a motion to second on the floor. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion passes. Thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
Darren, have you got anything for us? Jackie?
I do not, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Anybody have any other orders? Commissioner Mojo.
We don't always have the public hearing. I just want to ask this gentleman, did you have anything you needed to address the board today on?
Okay, thank you.
All right. If we have no further business, we're adjourned.